The additional.
Right.
Yes, there's no question. He's not gonna make that decision.
It's up to you.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I just don't know if we're gonna have another meeting.
Yeah, I was thinking that I should have added them. Well, until I hit me a spark, because I had the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That'll get too confused, so I'll just add this one.
Yeah.
Because I almost.
That's a good way to, that's a good way to consult.
Yeah, because I don't even have the term information on that.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I don't want to confuse it.
Yeah. I mean, I guess she can, I can look.
No, no, don't worry about it.
I haven't looked it on the website.
You got to do something.
We'll deal with it.
At the next.
Because they don't meet, yeah. Plus, I wanted to talk to, because I explained that alternates sometimes, you know, their first preference to move up to see if somebody's gonna move up. If not, I said, I know a couple of them want this thing. So he said, you know.
Yeah, we've really gotta move this up there.
Guy who was interesting, is it Chris Trump?
Chris, yeah, yeah. In the other way.
I met with him yesterday. Do we add it on now? Tristan put it out there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that was.
But I told him it was gonna be.
That one's more important, the RTM.
Yeah.
There you go.
I can hear you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Initiation.
Hello, hello, hello. Just doing this one?
All right. You all ready?
Yeah. Okay, all right, welcome. We'll call the March 6, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Item 1, to approve the Board of Selectmen's minutes of February 6, 2019. I put those forward in a form of a motion. Second.
So move.
All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, item carriage, thank you. Item 2, actually, before we get to item 2, can I get a motion to add the recommendation to appoint Shahida Sumaru to RTM to the agenda under item 13?
Make a motion, we add that to the agenda?
Recommend approval.
All right, any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 2, can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss tax appeals? We'll invite in Attorney Paredo.
Recommend approval.
Second.
All favor say aye.
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 Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
For the record, we're back in regular session. For the record, no votes were taken while in executive session. Can I get a motion to approve the proposed settlement between Salrich 7, DBA Branford Dry Cleaners, as proposed by Attorney Paredo?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Discussion hearing, all favor say aye.
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 Yeah, motion to accept the proposed settlement for Malavacy Investments.
Make a motion, we approve?
Recommend approval.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item 3, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from Debbie Kahn, Director of Information Technology, to waive the bid for the purchase of Milestone Software and award the contract to Omni Data in the amount of $18,137.30. I think we have here a letter from Debbie, and we have Joe Abitell here. Joe, you wanna just hit the, this project and the justification for waiving bid?
Yeah, we're looking to replace a very old CCT system in Town Hall. For one thing, cameras are not in the right place. There's some secure areas they really need to have some camera action. Now, this is a very old system, it's not attachable. Omni has a lot of expertise, and they take care of police department cameras, including the ones out on the poles, and everything inside for security reasons. What the idea behind this is, is to use their Milestone Software, which is generic, it's across all platforms, so we'd be able to, if there is an issue at Town Hall, we'd be able to send the videos directly to the police department in case of an insurance claim or anything like that. A reason we chose Omni, like you said, they have a lot of expertise, they already handle the maintenance and everything over at the police department, and I think they can hook us up seamlessly. This is for a turnkey project. Apparently, this has already been approved financially, we're just trying to get this vendor because of his expertise. We're hoping to carry this over to the new community house and others eventually, so that wherever something in town goes wrong, we have video for it.
So, as I think Joe touched on, this project is already in the current year budget.
Yes.
Our funds available, and it's really just to get the town on a uniform platform.
Yeah, the big thing is, our current system is so old, it's got an in-house DVR that we can't get the video to anybody if something happens. And this is the big reason we're trying to update it now, we've already budgeted for it, and we decided after talking with the police and the other departments that it would be the ideal way to go is by choosing Omni because it would be directly compatible. There would be automatic links because we're already on fiber between the buildings, so it would be a simple matter to take any video, back it up directly to the police in the case of a lawsuit or anything like that.
Okay.
And by the way, this includes, excuse me, two years turnkey maintenance also. So there's one phone call if something goes wrong with the police or at Town Hall or any of the other departments.
So this benefits the police department, too?
Yes, because right now they have nowhere to get video from Town Hall.
Gotcha, okay.
And this has gotta help that a lot.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve.
All right, motion approve, second.
Recommend approval.
All favor say aye.
Aye. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Item 4, to consider and if appropriate approve a recommendation from the Solid Waste Management Commission to waive the bid for the brush chipping and award the contract to Harvest New England LLC in the amount of $460 per hour inclusive of all equipment, materials, and labor. Dan?
Good evening.
Good day.
Yeah, so this is the vendor we've used for the past number of years, 10, 15 or so, to chip our brush at the transfer station. We've been, they've been the awarded contractor for the state contract that DOT uses, but this past year, I guess they don't really get a lot of work through that contract, so they decided not to, you know, put their name in the hat when it went out to bid again, so they're no longer the state provider, but they are the best provider, so we'd like to stay with them.
This is, as you mentioned, the contractor we've had used and we've built, and this funds are in our current budget.
Correct.
Right, so it's just that the state contract ended up expiring.
Correct.
Is it an increase over last year, Dan?
No, it's the same price.
Same price.
Yep.
Same price. Any discussion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Recommend approval.
All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. To consider and if appropriate approve a recommendation of the Solid Waste Management Commission to approve the amendment to the current recycling of the co-mingled containers contract at a set price point of $75 per ton for loads that are considered single stream loads. Dan, and this was reviewed by Board of Finance as well.
Correct. Yep.
She's favorable approval.
Correct, thank you. So this is our, the co-mingle containers is what you put out in your blue bin, it's the bottles and cans, the plastic, the metals. So our current contract with Murphy Road Recycling is for us to pay $30 a ton to dispose of that material in times where the newspaper or cardboard streams get dumped into that, it's considered contamination per that contract, and we get charged at a rate of $95 a ton. So this is an attempt to have a price point for when that paper, you know, which is recyclable, but, you know, is contamination per our co-mingle contract, when those two streams get mixed together to make a single stream, to have a price point set that's less than the contamination rate and set where the market is at this point in time.
So does this have anything to do, Dan, with reading in the paper about, you know, different towns having, like recycling's almost becoming not worth it anymore? I hate to say that, but I mean, that's, financially, it's costing towns a lot of money.
Yeah, and we're, you know, we're in a good position because we do the multi-stream recycling, so the paper and cardboard, when they're kept in their clean stream, we still get revenue for, but it is tied, you know, the markets, a lot of the markets, a lot of the recycling was sold to China markets, and they've since closed their borders to US recycling, and so there's, supply and demand has really shifted, and, you know, that's why the going rate to get rid of what's considered single stream recycling, which most communities do, is $75 a ton. And so most communities, I mean, you saw in the paper recently, you know, recycling's costing them a lot of money because they're, every bit of recycling is 75, 80, $85 a ton, and so we, if we keep our, you know, if the residents do their job and keep the streams clean on the curb, and we only pay $30 a ton to get rid of the bottles and cans, and we make revenue based on the market, which unfortunately is down at this point in time, but we still get revenue for our fiber. So the economics of recycling aren't nearly as good as they were four years ago, but, you know.
How do you, if you go on any particular street and one bin has a bunch of paper in it, how do you, how do you know when it gets to you that that is contaminated? Is there a way that?
Well, the hauler, when he picks up, has the segregated compartments in the truck.
Okay.
So that's why we ask residents to, you know, keep their paper separate from their bottles and cans, and so, and to bundle that in a paper bag or in a string, so when the hauler gets to the curbside, he can easily get that paper product, put it in the proper compartment of the truck, and then put the bottles and cans into the separate compartment.
So then who makes the determination that all of a sudden you had it contaminated?
So when it gets sent to Murphy Road, you know, once it gets tipped at the transfer station, loaded, and put into the roll-off cans, then it's sent to the recycling plant, and they grade it at that point in time and decide.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
To that point, I'll just hit quick, it's important for us to, I mean, we have the curb, residents, we need to be diligent in separating our streams because to Dan's point, which we're gonna be highlighted when we deal with number six, that those communities that are solely a single stream are paying a significant amount and is exceeding what the tip fees for municipal solid waste is.
Right, yeah, $75 a ton is basically what we pay to get rid of trash.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So with that, if there's no further questions, it's a motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, item 6, to consider and if appropriate approve recommendations from the Solid Waste Management Commission to accept the written notice of a two-year extension of diversion of acceptable solid waste under the municipal solid waste disposal and recycling agreement from Covanta Bristol, Inc., and continue diversion of our MSW to their Preston facility at a cost of $56.50 per ton for the fiscal year 2020 and $59.33 per ton for the fiscal year 2021.
That was thoughtful. So this is, we have a long-term contract with Covanta to deliver our waste to the Bristol facility. This is a secondary agreement to that where we send our waste to the Preston facility at a lesser tip fee. This, again, went to the Board of Finance, and they approved it. You know, there's a slightly higher haul fee to send our waste to the Preston facility, but the reduction in tip fee, it ends up being close to a six-figure savings to the town to, you know, do this diversion agreement.
Yep.
All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And I'll second that, and James, to that, to your point, that's what, for the homeowner that doesn't know, that's why we don't have single stream, because you could ask that once in a while.
Right, yeah.
So we're saving.
We're saving a significant amount.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 7, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Volunteer Service Center Board to waive Section 115-3 of the Code of Town of Branford as permitted by Section 115-4, and allow the serving of wine at a 20th anniversary event at the center scheduled for April 11, 2019.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
Discussion hearing, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 8, to consider and if appropriate approve the following resolution. Resolve that James B. Cosgrove First Selectman of the Town of Branford is hereby duly authorized to enter into contract with Pioneer Builders of Newington LLC for the demolition and reconstruction of the Indian Neck Firehouse Company 9 in the amount of $1,469,800. The First Selectman is further authorized to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Branford and provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the local, state, and federal government in connection with this said contract, and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto. And a motion to approve that resolution.
Sure, I'll make a motion, we approve.
Moved and seconded.
Just, just a question, does this go through the building commission, that, not the?
This was.
You had a point, we had appointed a different building commission.
Yeah, we have.
So they'll still, they're still.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion, hearing, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 9, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Branford Community Garden for the placement of a 4x10 storage shed within the garden fenced area located at the Branford Early Learning Center on Birch Road contingent upon any additional approvals that may be required. Motion to.
Motion to approve.
Recommend approval.
All right, discussion, hearing, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, item 10, green use, to consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Solid Waste Management Commission for the use of the town green on Saturday, April 27, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM to hold litter cleanup day.
Make a motion to approve.
Recommend.
All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from the National Association of Letter Carriers, Branch 19, for the use of the town green on Saturday, May 10, 2019, from 11:00 AM to noon to hold the annual NALC food drive kickoff.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, hearing, all favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from the Branford Parks and Recreation Department for the use of the town green on Thursday, on Thursday night, it's from June 27 through August 29 to hold the annual summer jazz concert series.
Second.
Discussion, hearing, all favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve a request from Sal Ananziato for the use of the town green on Saturday, August 24, 2019, to hold the Oh Yeah Festival.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh yeah. Second.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
To consider and if appropriate approve the town's updated ADA notice.
So the only changes on the ADA notice as well as the ADA municipal procedure is just the new.
HR director's name, so both, yeah, for this, item 11 and 12, the changes will be the. So both, yeah, for this, item 11 and 12, the changes will be the name of our HR director, Margaret Liberta.
Okay.
Will be seen in this one. So put that, so number 11, motion to approve?
Recommend approval.
Second.
Discussion, hearing, now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 12, to consider and if appropriate approve the town's updated ADA municipal grievance procedure.
Motion to approve.
Recommend approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 13, appointments, Board of Finance, Harry DiAdamo, term to expire July 31st, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Recommend approval.
Discussion, hearing.
Just to say thanks to Lorraine for serving, she did a great job over many years.
Absolutely, this is a number of years and, I wish her all the best.
Yep.
I have two stints on there she gave, came back.
That's right.
It was great. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commission of Elderly Services, Laura Myjak, term to expire December 31st, 2020. Ellen Karucci, term to expire December 31st, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Recommend approval.
All right, discussion, hearing, now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
A motion to appoint Shahida Sumaru as an RTM member to the 4th District, term to expire 11/19/2019.
Motion to approve.
Recommend approval.
All right, discussion, hearing, now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 14, reappointments, Commission of the Elderly Services, Patricia Brunel and Lori Rockwell, terms to expire December 31st, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Recommend approval.
Discussion, hearing, now all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 15, correspondence, do you have any? Item 16, any other business? Hearing now, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Recommend approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.